Out of here and I will mute myself.
All right, everyone, I just want to welcome everyone. Welcome to Gen Chem Study Session Number One with Dr. Taylor. Dr. Taylor, would you take it from here?
Absolutely, absolutely. So what we're going to do is we're going to talk about Exam One. And so since this is the very first exam of the semester, even though some of y'all have been with us from the fall, we're going to talk just about a couple of general housekeeping-ish things. So first of all, to remind y'all, Exam One, all of your exams will be at 10:00 AM. We are still finalizing the room assignments, so those will be out shortly. We'll be in all different rooms across campus, so very soon that information will go out everywhere. I know that this thing on the screen is a little bit too small, but the potentially useful information is already available, and I'm going to show you where that is too. So I'm currently in the 701 section. So when you are in e-learning, there is your usual 1312 section that belongs to whomever you have as your particular lecturer. So if you're in the 9:00 AM class with Dr. Wong, you're 001. If you're in my 10:00 AM class, we're 002, and so on and so forth. This one is the 701 section, and we actually have kept this around because that way everybody has access, all the sections have access to this same material. So that way, everybody's got the same stuff no matter what. So here in this lovely red color, it says midterm exam information. And if we click on that, it says Useful Info Sheet and Periodic Table Exam One. And that has the potentially useful information for Exam One along with all the equations we're going to give you. So I know one of the questions that often comes up is, alright, you guys are giving us an equation sheet. So which version of which equations are they going to be? So that thing is just, it's posted, it's up, you can look at it at your leisure, so you don't have to guess. This is the periodic table that we'll also have for you guys. The main difference is that we are using the one that's out of your textbook, but when we do y'all's exams, we print them in black and white. So these lovely colors will not actually be there because we do things in black and white. So it still looks pretty good, I have to say, and the information will all be there. It's just the colors will not be there. But that way y'all know where to find that and where that is, so you all have access to it no matter what. 701 section, course homepage, midterm exams. The other things you might have seen in here, those prerecorded lecture videos, these are actually left over now from Spring of '21. But if you did want to go back for any material, those are in there. Content has changed a little bit from Spring '21. Mostly, there's a couple of things we actually took out of the course. So there's some extra stuff in there, but you can scan through those at your leisure. The other thing that we'll sometimes be mentioning are end-of-chapter questions. So end-of-chapter questions are the ones that are at the end of the textbook chapters. And so we have specific ones that we recommend just because doing all of them is a lot. So we have a recommended list, and then the keys for all of them are actually also in that 701 section. I actually just put this one in there because they should be in your regular section as well, but if not, there they are. There's also the exam links and keys for the Spring '23 semester. I definitely recommend that you take a look at this. I know it says here, "These are not meant for you to study from", and that really is because we'll take different emphases over different semesters, and different people will write different questions, and we'll have different authors of different questions. But the thing that I do like about these, especially since for the Spring '23 semester, a lot of things were similar. So Spring '23, we were still, that was the first year we were actually doing the mostly multiple choice with two short answer. So I do like these exams to take a look at what the format looks like. I think they're really lovely for that. And aside from that, they're good, they're still valid questions. There we go, that's true, they're still valid questions. It's like sometimes emphasis changes a little bit. There's the Exam Reviews folder, where this recording will be going eventually, probably tomorrow, just because we're not going to get it until 6:00 PM, so that's where that's going to go. And then I actually posted this today, too. Here's a list of the SI schedules. It didn't actually include any of the names on here, but for those people that were wondering when SIs are and where they are, MC is the McDermott Library. And so here is the list of where all of those are taking place and when the SI sessions are. So that's kind of a new thing that I also got done today. Ha ha, as far as what did I manage to do in my limited amount of free time? Finally made the giant SI schedule that I'd been threatening to make since the second week of class. So where am I on things? Couple of other housekeeping things that you may or may not have thought of, and that's okay. But I'll tell you that we provide Scantrons. So the only things that you need to bring, so you bring pencils or pencils, certainly bring more than one. Your, I'm going to say the UTD ID, because that is certainly the most useful. If you absolutely don't have one of those, some other photo ID will also work. It's just the UT Dallas ID is the best one for what we're going to use, and a calculator. That does not connect to the internet. So you'll be using your brain for things. So a calculator, but one that does not connect to the internet. So it could be a variety of different models, all of those are fine, but one that does not connect to the internet. So graphing calculators are fine, scientific calculators are fine. By now, y'all have seen that sometimes you guys do need things like exponents and other pieces. So definitely having that scientific notation is valuable. Trying to think if there's anything else. I think that's it, 10:00 AM. And we're going to wind up collecting back all the exam booklets from you. So also, if you are involved at ARC, at the Accessibility Resource Center, you've already gotten your email that told you what your time is, but just realize that if you are in ARC, you have some different rules, so watch your email. If you haven't gotten that email, then let me know, because you should have. If you don't know what ARC is, then likely you don't need it. But if you do have anything, my favorite example, just because I have some close personal friends that have this, is dyslexia. So folks who have dyslexia, it literally takes them longer to read. I understand it's more complicated than that, but for the sake of this example, it literally takes them longer to read a question. So therefore, they usually have extended time on exams, and that information is something that is covered by ARC and by the ARC Office. So they are the folks that sends us an email to say, hey, here is this person, and here is the way to accommodate them so that they can actually read and respond to the exam in a timely manner. So that's what they do. So all lovely, all good. But yeah, all the ARC students that I have currently on their roster should have already gotten their email because I have wound up being the ARC Coordinator for reasons. Okay, pencils, AD, calculator, yeah, that should be it. Exam rooms will be coming out shortly. As far as what's covered on the exam, this is something we could actually turn to the syllabus for, believe it or not, I know, the syllabus. What, that giant document? But believe it or not, where did I put the syllabus? I think it says the syllabus. But believe it or not, in the syllabus, it does actually tell you what the first exam is going to cover, and that is what we are sticking to. So hanging out in here, it says Chapters 13 and 14, 1 to 14.5. So all of Chapter 13. So we are covering Chapter 13, and then Chapter 14, technically 14.1 to 14.5. And these equations that you see here, we will actually get to all of these lovely equations. So there's this little box right here that has to do with integrated rate laws for the kinetics that are upcoming. So that's what we're covering. So it's about four, we're about 10 minutes in. I know we've got some new wonderful folks from Living Learning Community, so we're going to be practicing, getting to know each other as we go along. Are there any questions in the chat yet, or did we already, or we're not yet?
We have two, actually, yes. Okay, question number one. Can you go over questions number 1, 1926, from the Spring '23 exam? And there's follow-up questions that say, what is the difference between the actual and experimental Vant-Hof factor? And how to find Vant-Hof factor for weak acids bases, example NH3? And then how to predict the IM forces formed between two substances? And what is the difference between mole fraction when in solution versus in vapor phase for Raoul's Law problems? That's like question one, so they had a lot of questions.
Great.
And then I have two more.
Do it, I'll say it.
Alright, so next question is, can you please go over number 64 and 68 from the Chapter 13 end-of-chapter problems?
Okay.
And will colloids from Chapter 13 be tested?
Fabulous, anything else right now?
Not at this moment.
Okay, great, perfect. So in general, I try to check in every, at least every half hour. Sometimes I do it more often, depending on when I think I have reached like a breathing point. So I won't usually get through all of them that I'm asked before I ask for questions again, in part to figure out if anything that I've covered has additional follow-up questions. So a couple of things, and some people may already know this, and if not, that's totally fine. So what is going to happen is I will wind up doing a follow-up video after this 4:00 to 6:00 PM. And that is typically where I actually do the previous semester's exam questions. So I will do these, but unless we just completely run out of things to talk about, which is not going to be a problem, I will actually save these for a follow-up video. So I definitely want these, so if you have questions about those, like I definitely want them, I will definitely address them. But because I don't know if everybody's gotten to take a look at that yet, it's kind of like the no spoilers policy for new movies. So I will hold on to those until later, but I definitely will do them. It'll just be on a different, on a different video, but we'll still do it, don't worry. Next up, I'm going to do these in the order that I can do them fastest, which means colloids is next up, because I talked to one of my colleagues and discovered that I covered these, but not everybody did, which means I can actually answer this, and the answer is no. Because essentially, if there's anybody that does not cover them, then we can't test on them. So if colloids were not covered by all four instructors, then they are not on the exam. And I found out that not everybody apparently is covering those anymore, and so I could probably take those out of my slides. But I didn't discover those until after I had talked about colloids, and by then I was moving on to Chapter 14, so I haven't updated my slides yet. So that's the fast one, because the answer is no. Next up, I'm going to see if I can do intermolecular forces for two substances justice in a relatively short period of time. So first of all, when this question comes up, even though it usually is about intermolecular forces, it usually looks a little bit different. So first of all, ways that Chapter 13 asks about intermolecular forces. I'm going to make this bigger because that is a teeny tiny font, useless, bigger. There we go, well, a little bigger. That looks like something that you could possibly actually read. Better, that's better, okay, great. So keep in mind that while we can just ask about intermolecular forces, we are not going to. We will instead ask things like, which of the following dissolves best in blank? And blank will be another compound. When you see something like this, the goal is to essentially match intermolecular forces. Let me go ahead and give you an example of that. So oftentimes, the example that we use involves dissolves best in water, because we use water a lot for various things. So, and then there'll be a whole bunch of options. And for example, let's go ahead and just do 3, let's do NaCl, let's do CH4, and let's do CH3OH. So when we're thinking about water, it looks like this. And because it has this lovely oxygen and hydrogen connected to each other, a hydrogen covalently bound to an oxygen, a hydrogen covalently bound to a nitrogen, a hydrogen covalently bound to a fluorine, this is actually going to set us up for a special kind of dipole-dipole interaction called hydrogen bonding. And really, what that means is the hydrogen is going to have what we refer to as either like a partial positive charge, my oxygen's going to have a partial negative charge. But when the hydrogen's connected to one of these small electronegative elements, it's like this hydrogen gets a little extra positive. Also, this hydrogen actually gets a little smaller, so that the interaction between these two becomes better. So the interaction in between the hydrogen, the lone pairs on the oxygen, is a little stronger than it ordinarily would be. So because of that, this winds up being one of the stronger intermolecular forces that we have, not necessarily the strongest, but one of the stronger ones. So when we're looking for something that dissolves best, the goal is to just match intermolecular forces. Because the larger that molecules get, the more interesting and complicated they can become. So instead of trying to use either a table to give us information like this, we're just going to play essentially a matching game. So taking a look at sodium chloride, did I actually manage to grab the periodic table? I did not, it was over here somewhere. There's the 701 section again, flash and by, there it is, periodic table. So sodium's over here on the left, chlorine's over here on the right. And really, what this helps with is showing off the fact that because you have this left and right, sodium is a metal, chlorine is a non-metal. So our sodium chloride here is an ionic compound. So the thing that's going to keep the sodium and this chloride together are whole charges, a whole positive and a whole negative. So because of that, they're going to interact well with water because of, water's got partial positives and partial negatives. So it can dissolve in water, but we want to see if it's best. So I'm going to put can, can dissolve. But that's not necessarily what the question asked me for. The question wanted to know best, so we're going to keep going. Next one is CH4. This one is nothing but carbons and hydrogens. Anything that has nothing but carbons and hydrogens is what we referred to last semester as something that was non-polar. This means that essentially it's a beautifully symmetrical molecule. I'm going to go draw it in three dimensions just for kicks and giggles. Backwards. Trying to arrange a little tripod thing, but basically all of the electrons are evenly dispersed throughout this molecule. It's non-polar. We would also say this has nothing but London dispersion forces in it, or dispersion forces, and so it's not going to have as many things, as many interactions to bond them together. So this probably dissolved in water, I guess, but it's not going to interact with it very well. Last but not least is this thing, we don't even have to know what it's called. Because of the way this formula is set up, whenever you do see this OH like that, it is actually trying to tell you that you have a oxygen connected to a hydrogen. So technically, it looks like this, just in case you're curious. But you don't actually have to draw this, because we were actually trying to tell you based on its structure that you had a hydrogen connected to an oxygen. So with those beautiful lone pairs, this does actually exhibit that same idea of lone pairs and hydrogen bonding that water does. And this then was what we were really looking for, is something that matches. So not just something that could dissolve, but something that matches our intermolecular forces. So hopefully that helps with a little bit of what we would be looking for in matching intermolecular forces and working with that. I will also say that we typically don't ask like a whole bunch of questions on this. So yes, I would recommend reviewing this, but if this is like, whoa, that was a lot of stuff. It's also one of the first things we covered, but honestly, I think of this as being one of the more things that require more recall from the first semester than most of the other things that we do, just because intermolecular forces sounds like it's only one topic, but there was a lot of nuance and a lot of other factors inside of it, even though it's only one phrase. The other thing that can come up with intermolecular forces is the relationship to vapor pressure. So when we do talk about intermolecular forces, as intermolecular forces increase, your vapor pressure actually goes down. So there are different ways that this can potentially come about, but something to keep in mind is when we're talking about vapor pressure, none of these are ever straight lines. When we're talking about vapor pressure, we're essentially talking about how well does the liquid become a gas? So when we're talking about vapor pressure, the question really is, how easily does the liquid become a gas? And so the higher, so the vapor pressure is essentially the gas given off by the liquid. So that's where that vapor pressure comes from. So the higher your intermolecular forces, the better all the interactions are between all of these molecules or particles in the solvent or in the solution. So the better they are at being a liquid, the more attracted they are to each other, the better they are at staying a liquid, at staying attracted to each other, the fewer gas particles you wind up getting. On the other hand, if you have really low intermolecular forces, then they're probably really bad at being a liquid. Those interactions in between particles just aren't as strong. They're still there because it's a liquid, but if they're not as strong, then you're going to get way more gas particles because the liquid just isn't as attracted to itself as it could be. So the weaker your intermolecular forces are, the higher your vapor pressure then can be. Where else do intermolecular forces show up in Chapter 13? That's me talking to myself, by the way, that wasn't already obvious. Also, my apologies, I do have my camera turned off because I was actually doing a recording earlier, and I was getting this bad clicking noise, and they were telling me that my audio was lagging. And I don't know if that's because I'm on campus or just because it's a Monday, but my video is actually turned off so that we have as high a quality as I can manage with the equipment that I currently own. Okay, so intermolecular forces in Chapter 13, oh, there's one more place where it kind of shows up, which is kind of in the, and now for something completely different. In the definition of an ideal solution is the other place that this shows up. So you usually hear ideal solution when you hear someone talking about Raoul's Law. Raoul's, sorry, it's got lots of vowels in it. But if I pronounce it real slowly, I can get them in the right order. Raoul's Law is for ideal solutions. And really, part of what the ideal solution is, is that you have similar intermolecular forces. With actually the idea that your delta H of solution would actually be equal to zero, that your intermolecular forces are actually so very incredibly similar to each other that when you mix two liquids together, that notion that we're going to break solute-solute bonds and break solvent-solvent bonds and form solute-solvent bonds, basically everything just kind of cancels each other out, and it's all about the same, and you wind up with a delta H of solution of zero, because all the intermolecular forces are so incredibly similar to each other that it's like you mixed just more of the exact same liquid together, because these intermolecular forces are the same. So I could be wrong, because, and I always use this example. But if you ask me to name all seven of Snow White's dwarves right now, I will confidently name you six of the seven and get stuck and not be able to name the number seven. And if you ask me to name all seven of them in like another hour, I will confidently again name six, not seven, and I will have forgotten a different one. That's just kind of the way my memory works. So off the top of my head, I think this is all of the places, this is all of the places I can currently think of that involve intermolecular forces. It doesn't mean that this is all of them, it just means that it definitely started off with this matchy one, because this is that idea of like dissolves like. And that certainly is where we usually begin when we try to talk about, hey, remember intermolecular forces. But there are multiple places where they do show up or at least referenced. So I think I have answered intermolecular forces. I answered this question. So I'm going to go ahead, so this is going to be my next question, to talk about solution, mole fraction in solution versus vapor. But first, I'm going to go ahead and double-check and see if there are any more questions for now, to see if either there's questions on what I just talked about or other questions I can add to my list.
Yes, we've got one to add. How do we know which rate order, first, second, or third, to use in a certain problem?
Yes, excellent.
Did you write down Vant-Hof? That was also a question.
I cheated, and I did, I think I just wrote down I instead, because that's the little letter that we use.
Beautiful. Making sure you're good.
Thank you for double-checking, I appreciate you for double-checking. I definitely always appreciate the double-check. So I try to write really fast, but sometimes I miss stuff. Excellent, okay, cool. Yeah, so next we are still going to do the mole fraction solution versus vapor in Raoul's Law, in part because I started to talk about Raoul's Law. I didn't get very far, but I started. So the question that I think they're trying to ask, this is a fairly popular one, is there's a graph, and the graph looks something like this. And I'm going to do it, it's such a wiggly line, that's supposed to be a straight line. Fine, it's supposed to be a straight line, we'll just roll with it. And we're going to say this is the mole fraction of R, why not? Going that way, and then we'll do this line, and then we'll do little tiny dots. Oh, this is supposed to be a straight line, bear with me. There, great, three lines. Three lines, the x-axis is labeled, and we will label the y-axis pressure. Technically, this is vapor pressure. So part of the question is dealing, so we'll talk about the graph in a minute, but basically dealing with the solution versus the vapor in Raoul's Law. So a couple of things. Even though there's not a whole lot of labels here, this is enough to figure out a fair amount of things. We'll go ahead and we'll also say that this graph is an ideal solution of solvents R and Q. Those look like different letters. So a couple of things that we can do from here. One is because this bottom part says mole fraction in R. What that means is this x-axis here is my solution. That is the liquid line. So down here at zero is where I have no R. Which means if I don't have any R down here at this zero, that does mean that what I have is I would have all Q. Because this is supposed to represent all the possible combinations of R and Q. So this is going to go from zero mole fraction to one mole fraction R. Instead of mole fraction, if it makes it easier, you could also consider this zero percent R to 100% R. So therefore, since I'm going from zero percent R to 100% R in volume, in mole fraction, not in volume, in mole fraction of the liquid. That means that we could talk about somewhere where I have like 20% R and 80% Q, where I have like 95% R and 5% Q. I could talk about any of those places. And whatever I'm looking for, I'm still addressing the x-axis. So the x-axis is the liquid. And it really is all the different possible combinations of these two liquids together. So that's one of the weirdest things about this graph is we're oftentimes used to a graph describing a single substance with something changing about it. And instead, what's changing is the solution. So this is actually 100 different solutions, all graphed together. Now, the y-axis is pressure. So the question was asking how then do we relate this to vapor pressure or to pressure? So where we then have 100% R, we could look at the place where there's 100% R and my pressure line. So this place right here is where the liquid is all R, nothing but R, which means the place where I have all of the liquid, the pressure there has to be the vapor pressure of pure R. Because here on this y-axis, on the very far right is where I have all R. The far right is where there's nothing but R. Wherever that straight line hits its axis is where I have 100% R. So that's the vapor pressure of that pure solvent. Same idea if I wanted the other one, this other point here on the other side of the axis is where I would have the vapor pressure of my other liquid, which is Q. I have no R where this at where this line is. So since I have no, whatever that liquid is, it has to be all of the other one. I have no R. I have nothing but Q. That's where the vapor pressure of that other one is. Which means this line across, so this straight line that I drew is all about R. This dashed line that I drew is all about Q. This dotted line here that I drew is all about the solution. So there are a lot of different questions that can be asked about this graph. Some of the things to keep in mind are. One, since we already mentioned dealing with intermolecular forces and vapor pressure from this graph, I could also tell you that Q has higher intermolecular forces or that R has lower intermolecular forces because Q has that lower vapor pressure and R has the higher vapor pressure. So I could take this graph, look at where my two points are that have to do with vapor pressure, and I could relate those vapor pressures back to intermolecular forces. That's one of the options that I could do. I could also take a look at this graph and look at the halfway point. None of these lines are straight. We're going to pretend that this is the halfway point along my x-axis. And then I could ask something like, well, when you have a 50/50 mix of the liquid, I'm going to write this down somewhere so that when there is a 50/50 mix of the two liquids by mole fraction, gosh, that's an awkward phrasing. Which is present in a higher amount in in the vapor phase. So essentially, when I have the same the same mole fraction, or you could say that when the mole fractions are equal, what which is present in greater amounts in the vapor phase. So you could definitely take a look. And there's there's my big dashed line that's supposed to be roughly halfway. But what you might also have realized is because R has the higher vapor pressure, R is going to essentially be overrepresented in the vapor phase. So if you have a 50/50 mix in the liquid, you should have more than 50% of R in the vapor phase because R is always putting more vapor than Q is for that amount. So R is always going to be essentially overrepresented in the vapor phase, no matter what. But you could also just draw that line straight up there and take a look at where it crosses. And here's my R line and here's my Q line. R is higher up. So in fact, I have more R than I have Q because R has the higher vapor phase. So the other thing that sometimes gets asked about then is so if all of that's true, then what is up with? Do I have, I can do more ink colors. Sorry, this is not a thing I need to discover right now, but I figured it out. So there is also this point where these two lines converge. So there is a place where the R and Q line actually meet. That is where they're equal in the vapor phase. So so this point, we'll just label this point A. So point, so point A is where the vapor moles of gas are equal. So that line where they cross, it does have significance, but it's where the moles of the gas are equal. So where the moles of the gas are equal is different from where the moles of the liquid are equal. Something to keep in mind. Did y'all notice how messy all of this became in such a very short period of time? One of my personal struggles, whenever I talk about or teach this graph, is by the time that I'm done pointing out two or three different facets of this graph, it looks really messy. So one of the challenges then for y'all is to make sure that you start with a clean version of this graph and make sure that you can find these points on your own. Because one of the things that happens when we get to an exam is we'll go ahead and have a graph and it'll be what we started off with, pressure. And then the mole fraction, what do we put? The mole fraction of R. Go and go from zero to one. And here is my straight line. And here is my dashed line. And here is my dotted line. That's supposed to be a straight line. I'm sorry that it's not. This is where we started. This, this is what we started with. But this is where we wound up. So these don't seem to match each other. So oftentimes, students are a little bit surprised or confused because the notes that you wind up with have a lot of annotations on them, have a lot of things written all over them, have a lot of additional. This goes here and that goes there. But on the exam, they tend to look pretty stark. They tend to not have a lot of pieces to them because we're going to have you figure out what goes where. So definitely understand the question. But that is where we're at for that. Okay. So we talked about solution versus vapor. We did that. Actual versus experimental, van Haag factor, how to find for weak acids and bases, or which rate order to use. Oh, gosh, I want to do this one so bad. This is faster. So first of all, I have a slide in my notes that will answer this question very quickly. So I'll I'll once it. Where is the slide that I usually use that just has? There we go. Here they all are. So the question that was asked was, how do I know which rate order to use? And there are a variety of different answers to that question. So we are going to talk about all of these. But first, the grand question is what, what, what? So these are from kinetics, first of all. So this is chapter 14. And we can do a couple of different things. So one, since it does have something, I'm actually going to start with the rate law way down here at the bottom. So we can have things like the rate is equal to K times A times B squared. And then we could ask you something like, what's the order of the reaction? So we're first just going to address, we're going to answer basically the same question. What is the overall, overall order of the reaction? So if we have a rate law, what we can do is we can just add up the exponents. So the only additional thing you do need to know is is that if there is nothing there, you do assume that there's a one. So if this is my rate law, this is one plus two. We are adding up the exponents here to get one plus two to tell you that that is three or third order. So you could use the rate law, if we give you the rate law, to say, how do I know what the order of the reaction is? So this is one option, which is you have a rate law, you can add up the exponents, and that's how you'd know. There are other options. So actually going from the bottom, all radioactive reactions are first order. This doesn't always come up. We should be getting into nuclear chemistry, which is chapter 20, and then this comes back around. It's actually one of my favorite things in Gen Chem 2 is we get to, we get to like April and everybody is like, oh, my gosh, we're starting a brand new chapter. What is happening now? And I'm like, hey, guys, remember that stuff we did back in February? The answer is usually no, but that's okay. And kinetics comes back again. But this is worth knowing because sometimes we can't actually just say an isotope, no, what would we say? A rock? It would be a little more eloquent than this. But I am just going to go with a sample. That's even more vague. Perfect. A sample undergoes decay, radio radioactive decay. And then you would know from that information that it is a first order reaction. Usually, we're nicer than that. Usually, we're nice and we don't usually do that one, but we can. It's it is fair game to just say it's a radioactive sample. It's a radioactive reaction. And for you to know that that means automatically that it is first order. Graphs. These are still worth knowing. I feel like we're a little less likely to do these. But we're still certainly able to do so from your potentially useful information. Oh, I put it over here. Hold on one moment, please. What? No, 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 one note. Sorry, obviously, I'm arguing with the computer. This happens to me sometimes. I want this little box right here. Basically, I want to talk through the graphy options. And oh, sure, now you copy and paste. I don't want you now. I made a new screenshot. There you are. This is what I want. So here is my lovely new screenshot. So a couple of these are actually written in what we would describe as a Y equals M X plus B format, which is where you have an x-axis, a y-axis, M is your slope, B is this thing called the Y intercept. So for example, if I was looking at this top equation right here, this has a negative K T, so my graph would probably look something like this, supposed to be a straight line. But my x-axis is still going to be with respect to time because T here, time is my x-axis. My y-axis would actually be the natural log of that concentration. This thing I just scribbled all over right there should be the natural log of the original concentration. Wouldn't it be lovely if I just moved my label for the y-axis? Go, go gadget. That wasn't so bad. So why is the natural log of the concentration? The Y intercept is the natural log, right? This thing is B, natural log of the original concentration. T is the x-axis, which means the fact that this is going down is the negative part, but that way the slope is equal to negative K. So this equation is for first order. So we could give you a graph and ask you, what order is this reaction based on the graph? We could also tell you in words. It would be a little long, but we could tell you in words that when the natural log, I'm going to make this bigger so you guys can actually read this. When the natural log of the concentration is plotted with respect to time, a linear line is made, made, formed. So we could tell you that we plot the natural log of the concentration with respect to time and you get a straight line. So that's another way to tell you that. So when it says graphs, we mean graphs. We mean looking at some of these equations that are written in a graphical format and being able to say, ah, that actually is a first order because with the first order, you get a linear line when you use a natural log. So that's, that's what the graphs are about in relatively short period of time. Data table. This is the one where it's data table. The data table looks something like this one. Nope, not that one. One moment, please. One moment, please. Where did it go? This one. This data table. Sometimes it's smaller than that. Um, but this is the general idea where you could go ahead and be given a whole bunch of data and then be asked, so what's happening here? And if this is all of your data, then what's going to be your, um, your, the order of your reaction? Figure, figure out the exponent based on the table of data. So that's what the data means. The problem says so. Um, not kidding, we do this sometimes. Uh, so don't, don't forget that it could actually just say, um, for the following, we wouldn't usually ask you about the order of the reaction, we'd ask you something else, but for the following first order reaction, dot, dot, dot. So we will sometimes just be like, ah, this is a first order reaction just by, by the by, or a second order reaction, or a zero order reaction, or whatever is happening. Um, so we, we could just tell you totally an option, definitely an option. Um, the other one, last one, units on k. So this one's kind of fun. Maybe I should not use that phrase because I think what's fun for me is maybe not fun for everybody. Uh, so when we're talking about a rate law, rate laws look like this. I'm just going to use one reactant to make my life easier. K times the concentration of A raised to some power. The thing is, is that the rate always has the same units. The units on the rate have to be meters, oops, not meters. Molarity, that is Molarity, that's what the brackets are. Big capital M, spiky M, Molarity, per second. Um, so the rate is Molarity per second. That is the units of your rate. Then you have this lovely rate constant that is just going to make everything work. That's what it's for. Then you have Molarity raised to a power. So what happens is, for example, and we're gonna do a couple of these to demonstrate the point. So if this is raised to the first power and my units need to match, that means my rate is in Molarity per second. I have k, I have Molarity. So when I'm doing this, then my Molarities, I'm basically going to solve for the units of k. So I'm going to divide both sides by Molarity. Those cancel out. I get the units of k to be inverse seconds. So that's the units of k for a first order reaction. What if it's different? Same idea. Rate is equal to k, this time we'll go ahead and do this for, just for fun, we'll do this for a third order reaction. Totally different. Um, units of rate still are going to be the same, there's still going to be Molarities per second. K is going to be whatever makes it work. Now this is cubed, so I now have Molarity cubed. I'm still going to solve for k. So since I'm solving for k, I'm still going to divide by Molarity cubed now, whatever's over there. And then, though my units on k now are going to be different, now I have Molarity to the negative two, seconds to the negative one, is equal to the units of k. So the units of k will tell you what the order of the reaction is. So oftentimes what happens is the problem will say something like, um, a reaction has a rate constant of 0.2 inverse Molarity inverse seconds. And we'll just go ahead and ask again, what is the order of the reaction? The overall order of the reaction. And then there are different ways to do this, but basically I'm going to use the same method that we've been using. We're essentially, I know what my rate is. I know the rate law. But now what I know is I know that my rate is Molarity per second. And now I know my rate constant. I know this part. And then I'm solving for the last part. So now all I'm going to do is solve for the other part. So now I'm just going to divide by whatever my rate constant was. So I'm going to get rid of my seconds, those just go away. I get rid of the negative one on this side. Uh, this is where some x, a little bit of exponent math would help you out. But I basically should get Molarity squared. So that's going to tell me that my x should equal two, and this is an overall second order reaction. I will say that instead of doing the algebra, um, there is, um, if you notice, there's basically a little pattern in here where if it's first order, it's just s to the negative one, which really means that it was zero of those. Um, if it's second order, it's, uh, negative one Molarity inverse seconds. When we did the third order, we actually solved and found it was negative two. So you can actually go ahead and look at the pattern here, uh, and either realize that whatever this is going to be is essentially, um, related to the order of the reaction. So if it's a second order, it's negative one. If it's third order, it's negative two. If it was 27th order, it would be negative 26 inverse seconds. And you're always going to have the inverse seconds in there. Okay. So that is rate loss. Sort of. Well, it's order of the reaction. How are we going to know which rate or which rate order to use? Gosh, I hope that was what the person wanted. Uh, now I will say, since this is the little box of the potentially useful information page, I will say that knowing which one of these is what you want is up to you. Um, so part of the reason why there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven equations on here is we do want y'all to be familiar enough with the rate laws to figure out which one you actually need. Now I will give you one hint in there, which is that these three things, these are all what are known as half-life equations. So that's what all of those are. Uh, so t with a subscript of one half, those are all half-life equations. Um, one of those is first order, one of those is zero order, and one of those is, um, second order. So, and I will tell you the quicker thing up here is if you see the natural log up here, that's first order. So there's actually two first order equations. The, these two actually are just rearrangements of the same thing. Um, and then since we're doing it, this one is second order. And this one is actually zero order. Zeroth order. So la, la, la. Okay, I think I answered this question. I'm going to give myself a little checkmark. And now that it's five o'clock, I will go ahead and ask if there are additional questions.
Yes, we have one. What are all the equations slash math we will need to know for this test?
Okay. Um, so a couple of things. Um, one, in case you are new to joining us, on the 701 page that everybody has access to, at the very top of the course homepage, this red folder that says midterm exam information, this actually has the useful info sheet and periodic table. So this has the potentially useful information that we are giving y'all along with the formulas that we are giving you. So this should help out with what all formulas, do you need to memorize? What did they look like? Because I know that there are some of these that in my class, I don't always write them exactly like this. So that way, if there are differences, you can go ahead and take a look at those differences in advance to get an idea of which ones are familiar to you, which ones maybe look a little bit different. Um, some of the ones that I think are at least a little bit different from what you may have seen before. Um, and this one is just, it, it just is, like, I don't really have an answer for it. Um, well, I can tell you what the instructors talked about, which basically was, we're going to get them the equation sheet on Friday, which we did, so that they can just learn what's on there. Um, personally, uh, so in some classes, this change in temperature with, with the I, without the I, uh, I frankly don't ever show my class the version of this without the I. Um, so my section might have been stupefied to find out that there was this top row. Um, because personally, I don't teach this top row. Um, I know that's probably weird for some of you because everybody else teaches that top row. Um, but you know, to each their own. Um, personally, I find it very frustrating to work with equations for a little while and then be like, oh, by the way, we totally forgot this variable. We didn't forget a variable. Um, so it's a, it's a pet peeve of mine along with your, in, in your textbook. Um, so I, I just, from my class, we just put the I in there from the very beginning. Uh, because that's the way I personally prefer it. Um, same way, I am aware that in Alex, uh, Alex did freezing point differently. Um, so this is what our freezing point looks like. Um, we go ahead and we do a positive change and then tell you to subtract the change. Getting rid of those eraser marks in case that's confusing. Um, so basically there is a negative sign, but we suck the negative sign as a subtraction point here, uh, and not up here. Alex, I believe, does it the other way around. So again, if that is confusing for you or different from you, you may choose what you wish, if you would like to either memorize your own set, or if you just want to deal with the fact that freezing point depression should get smaller, um, make sure that that happens. That one is up to you. Um, there's one other one that I did want to discuss because there are, thi- this one is the one thing that is not really on here, but again, the team, we as a team, we were like, no, that's fine, we can, we can handle it, we'll warn our classes, they'll be okay. Um, this thing. This is your only vapor pressure equation. In my class, um, I a lot of times make it look like this. Uh, vapor pressure of the solution is equal to the mole fraction of the solvent times the vapor pressure of solvent. And therefore it doesn't look a whole lot like the thing that's on the potentially useful information page. Uh, but that's, that, that is my choice, I am aware of that. Um, so for those of you in my class that are surprised and startled, you have my apologies that I make it look different. I frankly just thought that as we were, we cover vapor pressure kind of early and we're still kind of getting used to solvent and solute, so I, I like this way better. Um, the other thing that's not on here is the fact that the total pressure is equal to the sum of the other pressures. So back when we were looking at Rolle-Lutz's law uh, and that graphy thing, graph thing. One of the things we did not talk about is if I actually wanted to know what the vapor pressure was at a particular point, we're just going to pick one right here. Um, and I wanted to go ahead and say, we'll pretend that this is 75%. Um, we'll still go with r and 25% q. Uh, theoretically, I could come over here and be like, oh, da, 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 da. And give you guys values for these. We'll say this is 0.4 atmospheres. We'll say that this up here is 2.2 atmospheres. Um, if I actually wanted to know what the total pressure was, uh, what I would just need to do is add those two together. 0.4 plus 2.2 is equal to 2.6 atmospheres and I'm done. Um, so there are Rolle-Lutz's law questions where you essentially need to solve for the pressure, uh, the vapor pressure of the solution, but essentially do it twice. Because if you have two components that each give their own vapor pressure, then you have to account for both of them. You have to account for the vapor pressure given off by r and the vapor pressure given off by q. So you actually wind up using whichever one of these equations you want to call it, either this equation or this equation, twice. Um, so if we were doing r and q, what that looks like is, um, the total pressure would be equal to the mole fraction of r times the vapor pressure of r plus the mole fraction of q times the vapor pressure of q. So we can go ahead and still utilize that. Uh, but that's, I think, the only one that is not there um, as far as your equation sheet goes. And honestly, that's because that is almost more of a concept than it is of an equation. Um, so as a teaching team, we talked about that and we were, we were okay with not putting that on there as an equation because it is more of a concept than an equation was what we wound up with. Um, we actually almost didn't give you guys Molarity. Molarity is on there. Molarity is right there, mole aside, divided by liters of solution. Uh, but we did have an argument about whether that was a definition or whether that was an equation. Um, and in the end, we were like, ah, it's a lot of concentration units, we'll just put them all on there. So they're there. So so the thing is, is, is that as far as the question that was asked, the question that was asked was, what's all the math? And I can't even find it right now. Uh, so the question that was asked is, what's all the math? Uh, the bottom line actually is you should be able to go through that potentially useful information page and at least kind of recognize everything on here. Um, even if by recognize, you might say, oh, this change in temperature with the Kf without the I and this change in temperature with the I, those are really like two different ways to say the same thing, and I don't really need both of those, they just so happen to be there. Um, same game, mole percent. I, I frankly don't know if y'all have really needed mole percent. Uh, mole fractions hanging out over here. Uh, so mole fraction is listed. But mole percent is also there. So there, there are some things on here that I'm not confident you'll actually need. Um, but they are, they are here anyway. Same game, I don't actually know that you need both of the first order rate laws, I don't know that you guys are going to need all of the things in this box, but it is all there. Um, in case, in case, also so you can kind of filter out what you need and what you don't need. Um, so yeah, so I understand that notion of all of the math. Um, but the, uh, that is vague enough that I unfortunately have to give you a pretty vague answer in response. Um, which is to take a look at the potentially useful information and see what you can, see what you can do with all that stuff. Um, because it got, it got posted, it got up there. Okie dokes. So I think I actually am to dealing with actual versus experimental van Haaf and how to find the van Haaf factor for weak acids and bases. So first of all, talking about van Haaf. Um, so first of all, I'm going to talk about, uh, theoretical first. So everything I'm about to talk about is theoretical van Haaf, also known as the lowercase i. So first of all, when we talk about this, we're usually talking about things like sodium chloride going into water and we get one sodium and one chloride. So when this happens, sodium chloride dissociates into two pieces. So we get two pieces out of that, we get therefore an I of two. So we should be able to look at any ion any ionic compound. Or really, polyatomic would also count. So let's do a weird one just for funsies. First one we haven't seen in a while, it's ammonium phosphate. Yay. That thing goes into water. I should actually get three, three ammonium ions and one phosphate anion. So I actually would have a theoretical Van Hooft factor here of four. I get four pieces. So therefore, if we do have something like glucose, sugars, glucose, C6H12O6, we just, we just get glucose. It just, it just hangs out. I of one. We could call this a non-dissociating, non-dissociating solute. We could also call this a non-electrolyte. Also thing we could call these. Things that give us a whole bunch of stuff. We could actually call these strong electrolytes or just electrolytes, because they are giving off ions. The ions will conduct electricity. So theoretical Van Hooft factor really has to do with assessing the formula and determining from the formula, really, you're looking for things that can fall apart into ions, things that can dissociate. One of the things that we can do when we're looking at those is we could do something like a 0.2 molal, what is that supposed to be? Solution of, since we just covered it, I'll do glucose, C6H12O6 and a 0.2 molal solution of magnesium fluoride. Nope, actually, I don't, I don't want that. Changed my mind. Hold on. Sorry, every once in a while, I know background information and I'm like, no, I don't want that. In case you're curious, I don't want that because fluoride compounds don't dissolve very well in water. We'll make these aqueous in water. So every once in a while, my brain, my, my pen will write something because I'm like, that's a compound that they might have seen before or at least one that they can look at a periodic table and figure out. And then my brain will be like, that would not dissolve in water. What are you doing? And then I could ask, which has the higher boiling point? So the thing is, is that I've got the C6H12O6. Lots of carbons, lots of hydrogens, lots of oxygens. Everything's also condensed in this formula. So even if they didn't give me any more information aside from this formula, I would actually be able to say that this has an I of one because there's no information that gives me anything else. There's no polyatomic that are in here that I can recognize. There's no metals in here that I can help out and figure out that it's ionic. All I have is a bunch of carbons and hydrogens and oxygens mushed together in a way that doesn't give me any clarity. That you guys are going to assume is a non-electrolyte, is an altogether, kind of as a process of elimination. Magnesium bromide, on the other hand, there's magnesium hanging out on the left side of the periodic table. There's bromine hanging out on the right side of the periodic table. So that is going to be a electrolyte that is going to be something that breaks into pieces that has an I of three. Again, theoretical, this is all theoretical stuff. So even though it says a 0.2 molal, really, we're going to assume that this is 0.2 times three for really a 0.6 molal solution. I'm just going to put of ions or of solutes, of stuff. So the thing is, is that when I want a higher boiling point, the thing that has the greater change, I want the thing with the higher molarity of stuff. And the thing is, is that my sugar, my glucose, I could change that based on my value of I, but then I just have 0.2 times one to give me 0.2. So that's a lower number than my 0.6. The more solute that's dissolved, the higher my boiling point elevation is going to be. So that means that my aqueous solution of magnesium bromide should have a higher boiling point. So all of that was working with theoretical Van Hooft. So theoretical Van Hooft is all, look at the formula, think about what you know about the compound, tell me what it is, and it's a whole number. So anytime we're doing theoretical Van Hooft, it's all, it's all whole numbers. Perhaps I should have started with that. All whole numbers. Because essentially, you're making an assumption and you're making an assumption based off of a formula. So it's, you're either going to assume that it falls apart or it doesn't fall apart, and those are your only options. Next up, experimental Van Hooft. So experimental Van Hooft then is going to wrap around the idea that in reality, you might not get a perfect whole number. And there are different reasons for this. That main idea being that, so we were looking at that throwing sodium sodium chloride in here. And the thing is, is that if I really just had a few of these, it's one thing, but the more of them that I put in here, the more likely it is that they're going to find each other and they're going to in fact form ion pairs. So the more, the higher the concentration, higher the concentration, the more likely it is to form ion pairs, which will lower down your I value. It'll lower the Van Hooft factor. Because the more of these that basically glomp back together, the more of them are then associating back together. The more of them that are acting like they are a non-dissociating solute, the more of them that are therefore not contributing to that I of two, they're looking like an I of one. So you can wind up with a range on there. So there's a couple of different ways to grapple with this. One of the ways is just to solve essentially. So for example, if you had a question, maybe it just asks, maybe it just says, the free, sorry, the, I'll make this bigger in just a minute. There we go. A little bigger. There we go. The freezing point depression of a solution of, we'll just keep using sodium, well, we'll use sodium bromide, why not? So sodium bromide is, it tells me the freezing point depression, so I can actually just use a positive number. No, sorry, it's just, is 1.1 degrees Celsius. I'm not going to find the degree symbol right now. Degrees Celsius for a one molal solution. What is the theoretical Van Hooft factor? Wait, hold on. Wait, 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 wait. No, no. Got to change the number. Got to change the number. Sorry, I shouldn't make things up as I go along. Bad things happen when I do that. Hopefully this will work out. Sorry, one moment, please. While I desperately see if I have messed up the math already. Oh yeah, no, that won't work. Hold on, I'm just going to change. We'll take the sodium phosphate, shall we? Sodium phosphate, that'll be fine. Okay, sorry. So my day today has actually gone according to plan. It did not leave me with a lot of time to prepare for this review session, unfortunately. Okay. So I apologize that I changed this a couple of times. But now, we can do this math. The freezing point depression of a solution of sodium phosphate is 1.1 degrees Celsius for a 0.3 molal solution. What's the theoretical Van Hooft factor? So this is just saying, so here's some stuff. Tell me what's going on. So our freezing point depression is ImKF. We can go ahead and grab. Did I put this in the same, no, I put this in a different order. Well, we'll go ahead and rearrange this order just to make it look like the potentially useful information page. This looks like this, KFIM. So the freezing point depression is 1.1. The KF value, did it say water? It's gonna aqueous solution. Sorry. Should, I never quite know, honestly. Actually, for this review session, I never know quite what to prepare for because I don't always know what you guys are going to be curious about. Boiling point, KF 1.86. Oh, that's another thing, 1.86 times I that I'm just going to solve for, then the molarity times 0.3. There we go. So then I can go ahead and divide both sides by 1.86 times 0.3. 0.86 times 0.3. 1.1 divided by 1.86 divided by 0.3. And I get 1.97 is equal to I. Oh, I was doing better than I thought. Sorry, I was doing a lot of estimations in my head when I did this. But this works. This works great. So in this case, so when you're, ever you're doing a theory, a actual, so this, this would be our actual Van Hooft factor. It says theoretical. Oh no, oh no. What am I doing? This was supposed to be the actual experimental. You guys can't see me, but I'm rubbing my eyes because I'm sad that I messed that up. So I wanted this to be the theoretical Van Hooft factor because we were supposed to be transitioning into getting things that were not whole numbers. That was the whole goal of this problem, was to transition and to get things that were not whole numbers. So freezing point depression, calculating the experimental Van Hooft factor, we essentially are plugging in numbers and solving for I. One thing that you should note is that sodium phosphate, and this is the part of the problem that has gone according to plan. Sodium phosphate looks like this. So if we were doing theoretical, you would actually tell me this has an I of four. If we were doing theoretical, I should get three sodium ions. I should get one phosphate anion. So theoretically, I should get one, I should get four. But my experimental is lower than that. So this is the other part that I wanted to point out and that has gone according to plan, is that my experimental is lower than the theoretical. Because essentially, the only reason why those two should not match is because of ion pairing. So your experimental value for the Van Hooft factor should only go down. It shouldn't go higher than your theoretical. So that part at least went according to plan. Can't do one of the things I was going to do with this problem because I made it theoretical before, but that's okay. That's okay. So let's go ahead, since it's about 5:30, and check and see where we are doing on questions.
We've got two more. What are the relationships between pressure, temperature, et cetera, that will be helpful? We have to know. And then the second question is, in the equation for KF and KB, do we need the negatives? Do we need the negative sign for freezing point and why is it there?
Okay. So the, so to, to, so the, that big, the big exhale. This question about the relationship between temperature, pressure, et cetera. I need you to be a little more specific because, because I, I don't know what direction to go in when this question comes up because there are two different things that we could talk about. We could talk about vapor pressure. And if we're talking about vapor pressure, then we could talk about the fact that as the temperature goes up, your vapor pressure also goes up. This, this is true because when we're talking about your liquid going into a gas, you're going to be able to get more of your liquid to escape into the gas phase with a higher temperature. You give those molecules more energy. You're going to get more into the vapor phase. So that's going to happen. If you wanted to talk about osmotic pressure, then you could talk about the fact that you're going to get that same, it's not for the same reason. But essentially, you're, because of where these, these variables are, temperature is one of the variables in your osmotic pressure. And so as your temperature goes up, your osmotic pressure will also go up. This has nothing to do with gases, by the way. This has a lot more to do with the, what happens with the likelihood of osmosis and the ability of water to move through a membrane and the effect that that has with temperature. So those are two different things. Or maybe you're just thinking about gases for funsies because gases do have relationships with temperature and pressure. Because while you do not need this for this exam, there was a time that we talked about PV equals NRT. And usually, there's at least one end of chapter question that for some reason goes down this route. And so maybe you were curious about that and you want to talk about that. I don't, I don't know. So also, maybe it's a PLTL question because someone definitely brought me a PLTL question on Friday. And I was like, and basically, I think they were, wanted everything to go on one graph together and they don't. So if this was not what you wanted, then I need more words. Maybe this is what you wanted. Maybe you're very pleased right now. Maybe you are not pleased now. I don't know. I can't see you. You can't see me either because I was worried about all my audio quality.
I, I think this person is just curious to know, what, what are the relationships between pressure, temperature that will be helpful, that they need to know for the test? I think that's just what the question was.
That's fair. That's valid. I'm going to go then with the stuff I already wrote, vapor pressure and osmotic pressure.
And I have one more question for you.
Oh, sure, shoot.
I've got, what is the relation between the reaction rate law on the useful info sheet and the four rate equations in the box on the bottom right?
Sorry, that was mean. Okay, I can do that one too. Okay. Also, for those of you that are curious, I have not forgotten that I did not answer the question about weak acids. Just in case you're curious, I did that on purpose because if I Because if I go down the rabbit hole of van Haof factor for a whole hour. I feel a little guilty. So don't worry. I know I'm gonna do one more video after we all go home. Okay, so let's talk about KF and KB and do we need the negative sign? So let's, let's talk about this. And then we'll talk about this. So the word my potentially useful information page go. So here's the thing. Here's, here's the thing. The way that these equations that we gave you work is. Come on, Google, get your thing. There we go. Is. This set on the left are for something called freezing. Point depression. What that means is the more stuff that dissolves, the more solute you have, the lower. Freezing point is. So ignoring I for just a moment. Ignoring I for just a moment. If I have two solutions and one of them has like. Whatever that is in it. And the other one has all of this stuff in it. Where I know they don't look pretty, but the one on the right definitely has more solute. And then I tell you that you get two numbers. The whatever, the lower freezing point has to be over here. So we'll just go ahead and make this up and say that this is like negative 2. 0.1 degrees Celsius. And we'll say that this one over here on the left is like negative 0.3 degrees Celsius. So whichever one has more solute has a lower freezing point. Because that freezing point number has to go lower. When I say the word lower in the English language and I want to translate that to math. I need that number to get lower. I need the number to get smaller. That's subtraction. So somewhere in freezing point, I needed a negative sign somewhere. So the way that we did this is we basically had you calculate the change in the freezing point. And then subtract the freezing point from the original. So this TF here is supposed to be the solution freezing point. The freezing point of the solution. This guy is the freezing, the, well, the original is the freezing point of the solvent minus the change. So yes, you do need that negative sign in the freezing point. Because freezing point is supposed to go lower. It is called freezing point depression because the freezing point of the solution is lower than the freezing point of the solvent. On the other hand. Boiling point. Is actually called boiling point elevation. It goes up. So whatever is happening here, you have more solute. Your boiling point gets higher. So it's gonna get bigger. It's going to be a larger number. So again, translating from that English elevation, higher, great, bigger. We need a mathematical operation that's going to do that for us and that's going to be addition. So in boiling point calculations, what you might notice then is everything is positive and everything's positive all the time. Because for boiling point, all we have to do is add. In freezing point, we have to subtract because in freezing point, that's supposed to get lower, but boiling point is supposed to get higher. Essentially what we're doing, going back to a graph for a moment. So what's, what is essentially happening here? When we're talking about these collegate properties is your original is the straight line. So that solid liquid vapor line in our. These are all phase diagrams. That's what they are. I'm gonna go over them in apparently purple. So these beautiful solid lines that we have, these are for the original solvent. So these lines going over in the purple are for the solvent. The dash lines, so that I'm gonna go ahead and leave in the red color. Dash lines, now I'll make it even bigger. They are outside and you basically get the liquid for more of a temperature range. So the more solute you add, the more you essentially stabilize the liquid. You have the liquid at a greater range of temperatures. So your freezing point goes down because. That's the direction your freezing point can go. It's gonna go even lower than it once was. You're gonna have, you're gonna have a liquid at a lower temperature than you originally could before it freezes. And you're gonna have a liquid for longer for more of a temperature range, also on the high end where originally it would boil away. But you're still gonna have a liquid even at a higher temperature. So hopefully that helps with what's going on with the negative signs in that particular collegate property. Okay, the other thing I was laughing about. Oh, was there another follow up question on that before I go to the next one?
I don't believe there is.
Okay, cool. We're also seeing that fun time where. Because it's in the afterfire range and I'm still at work, I think people in the hallway are a little louder than they usually are because they're like, nobody's here. So therefore I'm having some problems with like, is that coming from my headphones or not my headphones? Where is that coming from? Okay, so the other question is, what about this thing? And how does this relate to, where did it go? Where are you? Oh, did I lose it? I'll just make it the screenshot. How does it relate to this thing? So. They do relate to each other and they don't relate to each other at the same time, which I know you don't really like. So the trouble with these two different boxes is they are both from chapter 14. So both of these are for kinetics. So these, these are both chapter 14 boxes. Don't get me wrong. That's what they're both for. The thing though, is that they're supposed to do very different things. So the thing that's on the left where it shows A and B. And then it has this negative one over A change in the concentration of A divided by change in time is equal to one over B change in the concentration of B divided by change in time. Reaction rate. This is supposed to relate reactants to products. So this has reactants going to products. And tells you how those are going to relate to each other. So this has information like your reactants are disappearing. That's why they get a negative sign here. Your products are appearing. It's implied that there's a positive sign there. And we are actually going to care about the stoichiometric coefficients. Because as the rate, the rate of your reactant disappearing is going to be related to your product appearing. So if we just went ahead and put in some numbers, we'll go ahead and say that this is 2A goes to 5B. As A goes away, you get 2A to vanish and you get 5B to appear. As this reaction can appear, sounds like it's a magic trick. 2A reacts to form to create 5B. So therefore, as these things are progressing, you're gonna get B to appear. You're gonna be to be formed much faster than A because you get so many more of them per unit of A. So this has to do with the stoichiometric factors that go into kinetics and it's relating reactants to products. Over on this other little box, I don't know if you can notice, but everything is A. Everything is A. It's A all the way down. So these are all about reactants. So these are actually reactants only. We basically are not caring about products in these. These are also integrated rate laws. So the thing is, when we talk about kinetics, what we want to care about is we want to care about how fast things are happening. That's the goal is what's, tell me about the reaction and its speed. How quickly is this going? What can you tell me about the speed of the reaction? When we're talking about reactants and products, all I can really do is compare the reactant and the product and the reaction rate. And tell you about how much faster is A disappearing than B appearing in comparison to the reaction rate? And everything is very self-contained. But if I actually want to know over a period of 30 seconds. If I start with one molar A, how much A should I have left after 30 seconds? Given a rate constant, these equations can tell you that. So all of these equations not only only have to deal with reactants, but you might also notice that most of them have T in them. Which means they have the factor of time. This is a half life, but hey, it's still a factor of time. Still counts. So these are all with respect to time. So essentially we use them for a different, to answer a different question. So they're still all about kinetics. They're still all about speed, but we use them in a different way. So when you're asked, how long does something take? That's when you want these integrated rate loss. Because they do have time in them as a feature versus dealing with the reaction rate ones. So hopefully that helps clarify a little bit. I know I didn't actually do any examples of any of those. I can't. But the question was just, how do they relate to each other? And they're all chapter 14, but one of them is relating products to reactants. The other one is basically all about reactants and time. Any other questions in the chat right now? I'm gonna go back to my other list.
No.
Okay, cool. Back to the list. Where did the list go? I mean, I know it's about dealing with percent ionization. I don't really know. I'm scrolling all the way back. So, okay, I also have 64 and 68. From end of chapter questions. So for, for the record, I have a tendency to, to wait on end of chapter questions too. Ironically, this is actually because in order to get there, I have to log into Alex. And every once in a while, when I log into Alex, for some reason, the Alex dashboard wants to show me like student information. And y'all don't need to see someone else's personal information about how they're doing in Alex. So I don't like to open the ebook unless I have prepared for that exact thing. Because sometimes Alex is like, hey, check out this person. And I'm like, but I want the ebook. So, so we talked about actual versus experimental van Haof factor, how to find stuff for weak acids and bases. So let's talk about that. So let's go ahead and do an example. I know that someone was asking specifically about ammonia, but we're just gonna do a generic weak acid. For a. A weak acid. HA has a freezing point. Yeah, I am using freezing point again. That's where I learned my lesson of negative 1.05. When a 0.25 molar, ah, no, molal. I don't want it to, I don't want to change concentration units. Nobody asked me to. I don't have to. This is supposed to be in Celsius. Molal. Solution is made. Aqueous. Solution is made. What is the percent ionization of this acid? What is its experimental? Look at us learning from previous mistakes. Me, me, van Haof factor. Okay. Yeah, I like this one. I'm gonna double check my math real quick on here, but I'm pretty confident that I like this. Because I know what we solved for before. Trying to make this go in one particular direction. I went the wrong way. Seriously? Oh, I made both numbers smaller. Shame on me. I do have to change this. Sorry. This number actually needs to get bigger, not smaller. That's better. I thought I was so clever. If you ever wondered why on earth it takes me so long to write my exam questions, it's for reasons like this. There we go. Great. That's the only thing I need to change because otherwise, let's double check things I needed to do. Tell you that it's, tell you what solution this is in. I said aqueous. That means it's in water. Make sure I say experimental van Haof factor so that we're actually doing this calculation. Go ahead and use percent ionization. Yes. Somehow tell you we need to worry about percent ionization. This is a weak acid. We're just using HA, so I have to worry about it. This time I'm using freezing point and I'm in molality, which is gonna match my freezing point calculation. I like it. It's gonna work for me. Okay, so first of all. We also get to do this little thing. It's an aqueous solution. So when I come over here. And I look, I can't actually look up the fact that my freezing point of water is zero. So if I didn't already know that, I could look that up. So I could go ahead and say that I have my freezing point of my solution is equal to. Where are all those equations? Here we go. We're just gonna, we're gonna show off and demonstrate how to use these. So I am actually using this bottom left one. So my. My TF is the. Solution is equal to the freezing point of the solvent. Which based on that table that I showed is zero or based on the knowledge that water's freezing point is zero also works. Minus the change. And that's what I'm gonna solve for. 1.05 is equal to negative change T, which does mean that my change in that is just equal to 1.05. Lovely. Then, since I have that, I'm going to go ahead and use this equation. Where that's equal to my KF times IM. Now here's where this gets interesting. There's two different ways to do this. I'm gonna do it the way that I think Alex does it first. For those of you in my section that have seen me do it the faster way. Don't worry, I'll still do it the faster way, but I'm gonna do it the quote unquote way everybody else does it first. So I need KF for water to solve this. 1.05 is equal to KF 1.86. 1.86 and I am actually just gonna solve for this factor together. So I am actually gonna solve for I times the molality. Now I'm gonna do this because what that's gonna get me is that's essentially gonna get me the actual molality. So even though the problem told me what I should be able to expect, this is 0.35 molal. That's essentially what I weighed out. So this, this is like, this would be with no ionization. Or really, this is what I think of as the formula unit. Molality. When you weigh stuff out, or when we were saying before, like I dump in sodium chloride. If I just tell you it's 0.35 sodium chloride. It's you weighing out that many molals of sodium chloride before you consider how many of those sodiums and chlorides actually hang out together. This actual is gonna then tell me how many of them are actually still hanging out together. This actual is going to then tell me how many of them are actually still hanging out together. So 1.05 divided by 1.86 gives me an actual molality of 0.5645. As my actual, then what I'm going to do is I'm going to take my actual and I'm going to subtract essentially my theoretical. So I'm going to take the actual and I'm subtracting the theoretical. That's basically going to get me the difference. It's going to tell me how many of them actually ionized, what amount actually ionized. So then when I wanted to do percent ionized, I'm going to have my ionized divided by my, really by my formula unit. Times 100%. So I'm going to be able to take this 0.2145 divided by 0.35 times 100. Times 100. And get about 61%. Ionization. So what I did is I solved using the freezing point. Equation, I solved for the actual molality. So that was the I times M, so I kept those things together. Once I solved for that, I actually subtracted the molality that was given in the equation. Because essentially I'm stating that what I want to know is I want to know how many things separated. So the actual minus the original is going to tell me how many things, how many extra pieces there were. So this is. How many extra pieces there were? So essentially I was starting, everything is in black. So essentially I was starting with assuming that I have everything in HA and things are moving to H plus plus A minus. So. Subtracting that out tells me how many extra things I have. And then I'm taking that extra things that I have, the ionized divided by the original times 100 to get me 61%. One of the other ways to look at this. What's happening here is. Since I am looking at this weak acid going into solution, let's say that I put three of them in here. And one of them ionized. So what's happening here is if I want percent ionization. What I'm saying is one of these things ionized, this one. One ionized divided by the three original that I had. Times 100%. I'd get 33% ionized. So that's what we're doing for percent ionization. As we're trying to factor in how many of them actually ionized. How many pieces did we get? Now. So there's, there's my percent ionization. Now, if I wanted the van Haag factor. The thing is, is that still using the same picture. If I wanted the van Haag factor, realize that my van Haag factor is the total number of pieces. Is the pieces divided by the total. So pieces would be 1, 2, 3, 4. Divided by the number I still started off with. Equal to I. Which means I would be 1.33. There's a relationship between my van Haag factor and my percent ionization. Whoa, that was a bad color to pick. Let's get rid of that. Ozzies. Oh no. Don't die on Microsoft Teams, you could do it. Yay, so there's, there's a relationship here between, between those. So while I did go ahead and solve for, for percent ionization, the way the book does, the way Alex does. There is another way to do it. Because percent ionization is only going to be between one, a van Haag factor of one and a van Haag factor of two. And there is a relationship between them. So this 0.33 and this 33% is not a coincidence. So the other way to do this is to crawl back to the original problem. We're still going to use this solving for the change in temperature. I still needed that part. But now all I'm going to do is when I have this lovely change in temperature of being 1.05 being equal to KF times I times M. I'm actually just going to solve for I now. So I'm going to do, so 1.05 is my change in temperature for the freezing point. My KF is 1.86, I is what I'm solving for. I'm going to take the molality out of the equation. What did I say that was 0.35? Divide both sides, I get an I of 1.05 divided by 1.86 divided by 0.35 is 1.61. All I need is the part after the decimal times 100. My percent ionization. Is 61%. I'm done. Also that, this is how you calculate the experimental van Haag factor. So for the people that were like, wait, you didn't calculate the experimental van Haag factor. Sure I did. It's, it's, this is the experimental van Haag factor, right there. And there's my percent ionization attached to the experimental van Haag factor. And I'm done. So the reason why I do both ways is because I know that depending on which section you're in, you've already learned how to do percent ionization. If you are comfortable with percent ionization, the first way that I did it, by all means, it works just fine. It just, I taught my class both ways because. When this, this thing bothers me when I'm like, oh, look, the relationship between I and percent ionization is so pretty. I couldn't help myself. So I went ahead and spent the time teaching my class two different ways to do it, which is why I did it in the exam review. Because if you can't tell, I really like using the connection between the experimental van Haag factor and percent ionization. I actually at one point looked up into some papers on this and this is very much the way this is supposed to work, by the way. I thought for a minute that I had like uncovered something through like a mathematical relationship and the literature is basically like, well, obviously it's supposed to look like that. Alright, so it's just our textbook that likes to do this subtraction-y thingy. Which works. I mean, you can absolutely calculate the actual molality, subtract the formula unit version and make a ratio. Absolutely works every time, no worries. So, choice is yours. They both work. If you like the way you did it in class, do it the way you did it in class. No worries. We are just about out of time, but are there any questions so that I can put them in the follow-up video?
Let me just take a quick look. There's no additional questions.
Okay, fabulous. Then really there's not enough time to answer any of the other ones. I will make a follow-up video. Likely at this point, first thing in the morning, because I don't know if you can hear my voice, but my voice is starting to go. So likely in the morning, that will address number 64 and 68 from the end of chapter questions in chapter 13. As well as question 119 and 26 on the spring 23 exam. Yes, I am just going to go ahead and screenshot both of those things right now. Because those are the last two pieces that I need. And I'll just end by reminding you all that you can take a look at that potentially useful information. At the top of the course homepage in the 701 section. So that's available for you guys. And with that, we'll go ahead and say goodnight.